Okay, so we're gonna get started here, just letting everybody know. Thanks Caitlin for letting our folks in online. So the weather probably brought a little less people here personally, but really happy that we were able to also offer up a hybrid option. So we do have a bunch of people joining us online as well. So my name is Jennifer Dixon and I'm with the Air Quality Division. I'm gonna be working a couple of different jobs tonight. I'm gonna be your moderator for most of the meeting, potentially helping out some of our panelists with questions depending on what ones come in. And then I'll be hearing officer, so you'll be hearing from me for part of the night tonight. So hopefully you're here to chat with us about a proposed permit that EES Coke Battery has requested that we did our evaluation over here to talk to you about tonight. So before we get started with that, I'll check the first second be walking for me. We're gonna run through a few housekeeping items. Alright, so for folks that are online, we do have all of your lines muted. Just wanna let everybody know that we are gonna be recording this hearing. So if anyone has to leave early, or if you know anybody who was interested in the meeting and wasn't able to join, we will be posting that on YouTube and we'll share that out with anybody who registered for the meeting. So they'll get that really soon here afterwards, hopefully by the end of the week. For our folks online, we're going to be asking you to ask your questions using that question and answer box at the bottom of your screen. You can also click the raise hand icon and that will raise your hand so that Caitlin can see it and we'll get to your question that way. Or if we do have anybody who called in tonight Caitlin so far?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So anybody that called in is just gonna use pound two on their phone. That will virtually raise your hand so we'll be able to see your question. But then of course, for folks here in the room, we'll do our question and answer the old fashioned way by raising our hand and we'll get to you when we get to that part of the night. So a couple of things I wanna just talk about really quickly related to how the evening is going to run. So we're here for a couple of different reasons tonight. The first thing we're going to do is do a little bit of an informational session. So as you can see, we've got some Air Quality Division staff here. I'm gonna introduce them in a minute. But they're gonna talk to you about the proposed project, a little bit about the Air Quality Division, what we do, how we regulate industrial sources. And then we're gonna get to that question and answer part where we'll be hopefully having a good dialogue and feedback from folks online, folks here in the room. We'll manage that the best we can. And then, once we get past that, we will go into the formal hearing. So during the formal hearing, we'll be taking your comments on the record. I like to just kind of make people realize that there is a little bit of a break in that so that we aren't going to be responding to things in your comments that you might ask. So a lot of times when people are giving their comments, they might ask a question. We won't be responding to those comments, we'll be strictly for the record. So we're hoping that we can have some good dialogue ahead of time so that when you guys get to that comment part, you are prepared to make the comments that you want. Alright, so one of the things that we really like to do before we really get into the meat of the meeting is go over the group norms for tonight. So these group norms that folks are seeing on the screen right now were developed with the help of a like coalition community group that we worked with. And we like to just kind of set the stage with these so that we can have a really nice meeting tonight. So the first thing that we want to encourage people to do is listen actively with an ear to understand. We are definitely here to hopefully give you more information, answer questions that you have. Ask the questions and request clarification. So if things aren't making sense, or we're using an acronym, you know, something like that that you wanna understand better, definitely ask us to clarify. We wanna make sure that we're criticizing ideas and not individuals. We wanna make sure, of course, that we're all communicating respectfully with each other. And then we wanna take space, make space. I like to just go over what that means. It just means we wanna make sure everybody has an opportunity to ask a question or make comments if they'd like to. Alright, so here's our agenda for tonight. You heard me kinda talk a little bit about it. But the first thing I wanna do before I get into introducing all of our Eagle staff is introduce, and I have to give her a microphone, I forgot, I'm sorry. This is Annette Switzer and that is the decision maker for this project. She's also our Air Quality Division Director and she wants to formally welcome everybody to the meeting tonight.
Thank you Jennifer. And I wanted to take a moment to thank everyone for being here tonight. I know that everyone has a lot going on, so you taking the time to be here with us tonight. You know, we know that this is important to you, you want to get some information. Hopefully you can answer your question. We hope to have some good dialogue with you during the question and answer session and provide you an opportunity to make any comments you'd like to on the record. There'll also be some opportunity to make comments after the hearing tonight if you're not ready to do so tonight, so there'll be the ability to do that as well. So again, thank you for being here. I'll be listening during the question and answer session and I'll also be part of the hearing portion of the night. So I'm gonna turn back over to Jennifer so we can start with the other part of the evening.
Alright, thanks and I appreciate it. So I'm gonna introduce the other staff I have with us tonight. So the first person I wanna introduce is Grace Knoss. So she is our permit engineer. You're gonna be hearing a lot from her when we get into the informational session. She's gonna be talking to you about, like I said, the Air Quality Division, the proposed project, things like that. And then we have Katie Foster. Katie is our inspector. So she is very familiar with EES Coke Battery, its other processes besides what we're here to talk about tonight. So you're gonna be hearing a little bit of from her during the presentation portion as she talks about what an inspector's role is. I also have Mark Mitchell. He's one of our permit managers. He's just gonna be here because he has a lot of the history too of this facility and we wanna make sure that we're here to answer as many questions as you can. So we wanted to bring another resource with us. Way over there on the end, I have Alec Kanaki. Alec is our air modeler, so he is also a meteorologist. So if anyone is angry about the weather today, do you know that we can kind of lay Alec here? Now, he's here to talk about air modeling. And then next to him, we have Amy Robinson. So she works in our air monitoring. I always try to kind of differentiate between those two because they are kind of similar. So Alec's role, he looks at what a company is asking for, looks at the emissions that they, the emissions of pollutants that they haven't had yet and uses a computer model to make sure that what they're asking for can meet the rules and regulations. Amy's job is a little bit more looking at stationary air monitoring equipment, equipment that collects air pollutants out of the air and gives us information. And then last but not least, I have Rick Welsh. Rick is our toxicologist. So you'll be hearing from the panelists once we get to the Q and A portion. But I wanted to just make sure I introduced them briefly today. I also have Caitlin DeBries. Caitlin is our techie person. She's gonna be helping us online and then we have a couple of other staff people online that are helping us as well, so thanks to those folks. So again, just going over the agenda, we're gonna get to that information session. That's gonna be where we hear that brief presentation from Grace. We'll get to the question and answer portion where hopefully we can have some time, answer your questions, getting as many questions answered as we can. We hopefully, we have people here that can get you the information that you need. What we're gonna try to do is hit that at about seven o'clock or whenever your questions are done, whatever comes sooner. So we started a little earlier tonight than we normally do because we thought folks might have quite a few questions. We wanted to make sure we left plenty of time. But if we get done with questions early, that's totally fine. We'll shift right into that hearing portion where we'll start taking comments on the record. After that, we'll go into a little bit more of how you can still make official comments for the record. The comment period doesn't end for a little while, so there's plenty of time to make comments in other ways if you're not prepared to do that tonight. It's totally fine. We'll talk a little bit about where you can find other information. Hopefully for folks here in the room, you saw out on the table, there's a lot of different pieces of information related to this project, related to air quality. We also have some staff that will help you sign up for air quality notifications in our new system. If you would like to do that, it will send you a notification that says, hey, EES Coke just submitted a permit application. So you sign up for the things that you are interested in and they can help you do that tonight if that's something that you want. And we'll also just talk really quickly on how you can get ahold of these folks if you have any other questions once the meeting and hearing is done. So with that being said, I'm gonna pass this over to you Grace.
Alright, good evening. Thank you everyone for coming out. I know it was a little slippery, hopefully not too bad coming in. My name is Grace Knoss. I'm the lead permit engineer. There we go. I'm the lead permit engineer for EES Coke's air permit application. I work with a team of air quality staff, including some of those on our panel, to review the application. Before we go into the project itself, I wanna give a brief overview of what the Air Quality Division does and how the permitting process works. The Air Quality Division mainly looks at air pollution, which comes from many different sources, including power plants, fuel burning vehicles, and a variety of industrial sources. Our overall mission is protect the public health and the environment. We provide this protection by using the authority of the state and federal laws to regulate these sources. Thank you, ACD staff do a lot of different things. We monitor levels of air pollutants. We examine toxic air contaminants to ensure the public health is protected. We conduct inspections of industrial sources of air pollutants to make sure they're in compliance with our rules and our permits. And we also review application and write permits to meet regulations. My job falls into that last category. Part of our role is to regulate and permit industrial sources of air pollution, such as power plants, auto assembly plants, steel mills in the facility we are here to talk about tonight, EES Coke. We do this by reviewing permit applications submitted by the industrial facilities. There are some things a draft permit does not cover and that we are not able to regulate. These include zoning, noise, and traffic on public roads. You'll wanna talk to your local government if you have questions or concerns about these issues. Our responsibility is to evaluate the project and ensure it meets all of the quality rules that apply. If the project meets those rules, we are required to issue the permit. Make sure a company is meeting the rules or regulations. They need to submit a permit to install application. First, a company decides that they wanna install, modify, or construct a source of air emissions at a site. Then, they're gonna send in an air permit application to us. This is gonna include air emissions calculations, toxic air contaminant review, modeling files, and any other necessary information for the application. The application is then reviewed by a permit engineer, like myself, to decide if their request should meet the state and federal air quality rules. During the review, with other air quality staff are involved to help with different parts of the review with the members on our panel here. If a public comment is required, as in this case, the draft permit is posted for the public to comment on. Public comment is a very important part of the permitting process, which is why we are talking to you tonight. Once the comment period ends, we evaluate all of the comments submitted. Comments can lead to changes in the permit and the final decision. And lastly, a decision is made on the permit application. This decision could be one of the three following. The permit is approved as written, the permit is approved with changes, or the permit is denied. This decision is based on whether the company, whether what the company wants to do can meet the air quality regulations.
Hey Grace, just make sure you're talking into the microphone.
Ooh, I apologize.
There you go. That's a little bit better.
Were they acting loud for you guys?
No.
Okay.
Yep.
I appreciate you. Thank you. So.
Better. That's, no, that's better.
That's better?
Yeah.
Okay, you guys can hear me in the background. We're all good? So what is coke? Coke is coal that has been put into a furnace and has been heated to around 2,000 degrees Fahrenheit without the presence of oxygen. This heating allows the impurities in the coal to be burned off and what we have is a pure coke. Those who need, or the pure white product is used in steel production and in other industries. There are many processes involved in coke production. This specific project is about sorting the final product and we focus on the proposed coke screening process during this review. There are three sizes of coke that are gonna be produced at EES Coke. We're gonna be small, medium, and large. And these are gonna range from a quarter of an inch to four inches in diameter. These are sorted by a screener, which is a machinery that is used in this series of holes to separate out the different sizes. The proposed project would consist of the following equipments. A secondary screener. A coke bin to collect the separated out coke. Conveyor is used to transport the coke to the secondary screener. And a sun hopper. The hopper, I would recommend thinking of like a funnel. It helps get the coke onto the conveyor in an orderly fashion. I also wanna let you guys know that the secondary screener and the coke bin and transfer points are gonna be located in the building, which you can see outlining right here. To provide a visual, here's an aerial view of Zuck Island. Where the arrow points to is the approximate location of the proposed secondary process. And this is gonna be a zoomed in image of where the process is gonna be. There is already an existing primary screener that's gonna separate that large from the medium coke. And the proposed secondary screener is gonna be in this area here. The process involves the addition of a secondary screener. And to begin of the screening process, the coke is initially cooled from being heated to 2,000 degrees in an area. And then it is gonna be transported by conveyors to the primary screener. The primary screener is gonna sort out that large coke from the medium coke. And then currently, there is a coke stockpile, which is where they're gonna get the coke that is removed or gets separated during the cooling process. And that is currently processed on another location on Zuck Island through a third party company. And then the green is gonna be this new project coming in. So they're gonna, they propose a secondary screener and this allows them to do that process that's done through a third party in conjunction with that primary screening process. And the secondary screener is gonna be controlled by a dust suppressant. This helps to keep the dust from the coke low as it's going through that screening process. The secondary screener is gonna be used to separate the medium coke from the small coke. Now that we've talked about the project application, let's talk about how we review a permit application. When reviewing a proposed project, the permit engineer works with other air quality staff to review the state and federal rules that apply to the project, the proposed air emissions against the rules that apply. And this includes checking those emission calculations I was talking about earlier. And if the proposed project needs it, we will also do an air toxics review to make sure the air toxic contaminants, we have the ACD or the Air Quality Division's health-based screening levels. And we will do air modeling for criteria pollutants and toxic air contaminants when needed. We need to, we needed to know if EES Coke's proposed products met these requirements. And I'm gonna talk more in detail about that in the upcoming slides. But before we get into that, I wanna give you a brief overview of our three different types of air pollutants that we look at. The first is gonna be a small group of criteria pollutants. This is a well-studied and regulated pollutants that the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency sets national ambient air quality standards for. The national ambient air quality standards are to protect public health and the environment. Hazardous air pollutants is our second group. And these are a larger group of pollutants. These are known or suspected to cause health effects or adverse environmental effects. We regulate these pollutants through any federal regulations that may apply. Lastly is toxic air contaminants. And these are a larger group of air pollutants covered by Michigan rules. They include almost any air pollutant, including hazardous air pollutants. And our rules, or stuff our toxic pollutants are health-based screening levels. And the pollutants in this category must meet these health-based screening levels. So as we talked a little bit about the categories of pollutants you're really, let's take a closer look at this proposal. These emissions account for the entire project, including their air pollution control equipment. So this is including that dust suppressant that we, that they will put on to do. For the project, we look at different sizes of particulate matter. Particulate matter is gonna be the largest, in particulate matter 2.5 is gonna be the smallest. In particulate matter 2.5 is gonna be 2.5 microns and less. For your reference, a human hair is about 60 microns in size. During our review, we apply a restrictive standard level called significant impact level. We use a computer model to ensure these pollutants would not impact nearby residents. So what is modeling? A compute, modeling is when we use a computer or air modeling and it's a simulation using several virtual air monitors surrounding the facility and that map out the concentrations submitted from the project. For EES Coke, we looked at the project running at its worst operating schedule and modeled both particulate matter less than 10 microns and particulate matter less than 2.5 microns. EES Coke modeling demonstrated that the worst-case emissions would not negatively impact the national ambient air quality standards. Once our team is done reviewing an application, we draft proposed permit. A permit is a legally enforceable document with a list of requirements called conditions that the company must comply with. Projects like this can have many conditions and I wanna give you a brief overview of what they look like. The requirements in the permit ensure that the project operates as prescribed in the application and the way it was reviewed by myself and the rest of the permitting team. Our permit has requirements such as emission limits, material limits, proper operating parameters for equipment, and associated monitoring, record keeping, and reporting that are used to demonstrate the enforceability of a project. The proposed draft conditions for EES Coke's secondary screening process include the following. There'd be a visible emission limit. And this would be used, and when we say visible emissions, essentially we are talking about the visible dust from the process. There would also be daily and annual limits on how much material can be processed. The material processing limit is for the worst-case scenario we talked about in the modeling slides. For operational limits, there would be a maximum rate that is added as the capacity of the screener. A dust suppressant is also required to be used to end the coke particulates from becoming airborne. EES Coke would also have to update its existing fugitive dust control plan to account for the proposed equipment. Fugitive dust control plans ensure the company has procedures in place that limit emissions. They would be required to create an implemented preventative maintenance or malfunction abatement plan. These are used for preventing, detecting, and correcting potential malfunctions of, or equipment failures. Our staff must approve these plans to make sure they are complete. To ensure the visible emission limits are met, testing is gonna be done on a regular basis. And lastly, EES Coke will have to notify the Air Quality Division when they wanna start up this process. Next up to talk to you guys is gonna be the inspector of this facility, Katie Foster.
Thanks Grace. Hi, good evening. As already mentioned, I'm the district inspector for the EES Coke Battery and I'm in the Detroit office. So I just wanted to talk briefly about what happens if and when a company gets a permit. Part of the district's role is to go out and ensure a company is in compliance with that permit and other state and federal regulations. So that involves obviously going on-site and conducting an inspection. And when we do that, we observe the process, we see how it's running. We look at any monitoring that might be installed on the process in order to determine if the company is operating in compliance with what's being put in the permit. So, you know, for this proposed permit, what I would do if I was gonna go out and do an inspection would be first, I would observe the equipment. I would take visible emission readings to see if they were in compliance with the limit that's in the permit. I would look at how they're keeping track of how much coke that they're actually screening and how the dust suppressant is being used and how the company knows that it's being operated properly. Another component of our inspections is that we ask for records afterwards. So I would be requesting records for, hey, all these visible emission readings that you've done on your own, let me see them. Let me review what you've recorded. Let me look at how much coke you've screened, see if that's within the limits in the permit. And also, the same would go for the dust suppressant. And then, more of a general thing that we do when we're on-site is we kinda just take a look around at everything and make sure that there wasn't any additional equipment or a change that might have happened that would trigger the need for permitting that, you know, we weren't aware of. Cause then we would need to, in some cases, cite a company and get them to submit a permit application. So that's kinda it in a nutshell. But if anyone wants to talk to me either during the Q and A or after about what goes into our inspection process, I would be happy to do so. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jen Dixon, I think, for the Q and A.
You got it. Alright, thanks to both of you. Thank you for advancing slides to Grace. Appreciate that. So we're gonna shift over to our question and answer portions. So if folks do have questions for the panel, we're happy to take them in the room here. Caitlin's gonna let me know if there's any that come in online. And like I mentioned, we'll just kind of run through any questions folks might have until around seven and or if you run out of questions, we're happy to start the public comment period, or the public comment period, I apologize, the hearing a little bit earlier. So do you have any questions online?
I do have some online. So just so people are aware, I'm gonna read them online exactly how they were typed into our question and answer box. So the first question is, the documentation provided in this permit application seemed to come up short regarding control of PM 2.5 for which Wayne County is already out of compliance. What is the peak proportion of crystalline silica in the materials processed in this facility? Has Eagle taken the fact into account while approving projected PM 2.5 emissions?
Okay, so the question sounds like it's asking specifically about crystalline silica and not necessarily coke. Am I correct in that? So I do not believe that this project looked at any silica emissions. So it did look at them. Okay. So Mark, why don't you go ahead if you have some information about that that you can share? Thanks for cleaning that out.
We did look at.
Make sure you're gonna, cause you're quiet.
We did look at coke. Sorry. Is that better?
Yeah, there you go. If you can hear that, then you know you're talking loud enough. There you go.
In evaluating the application, we looked at whether or not the coke or the coke ash contains crystalline silica. And it was determined that the percentage of the crystalline silica in the coke and the coke ash was less than 10%. As such, it is exempt from being considered a toxic vehicle contaminant under the state toxic laws.
Okay, so thanks for that. Hold on one second.
Hello. I'm holding here your Eagle's PM 2.5 attainment status fact sheet. And in this fact sheet, it says that people with pre-existing conditions such as diabetes, heart disease, lung disease, and asthma can be at increased risk of harmful side effects or harmful effects from particulate matter 2.5. As you know, because of the EJ screen data, our community surrounding EES Coke faces significantly higher than the national averages for heart disease, lung disease, diabetes, and asthma. We have over twice the national average for asthma, which means that we face unique risk from particulate matter 2.5. The question is, are our unique risks of asthma that, as your fact sheet says, makes us face increased risks or harmful effects? Would these unique health burdens taken into account in your actual, or will they be taken into account in your actual permit decision, not just your public outreach?
Yeah, that's a great question. So thank you for asking that. So we're going to talk a little bit about how this permit is reviewed compared to like a permit where it would have a larger source of emissions. So I want Mark to talk a little bit, and Grace brought this up in her presentation where she mentioned the significant impact level. So when we're talking about how we evaluate particulate matter, specifically particulate matter less than 2.5 micron, we do, we're looking at it in a very specific way. So Mark, do you mind kinda walking through how that evaluation goes?
Yes.
It's a yes or no question though, just to be, to be clear.
Okay, yeah, let's Mark, let's let Mark answer. So thank you.
I'm not sure though that it has a yes or no answer to the question. The emissions are evaluated and show that they will meet the National Ambient Air Quality Standards for PM 2.5. Those standards are protective of the public health for all populations, including sensitive populations. So in that respect, to answer your questions, yes, that was taken into account.
It's impossible for them to.
So. Let's Mark finish. Thank you.
In addition, the, when an area is not meeting the standard, it does not mean that no growth is allowed. Limited growth and growth under certain circumstances are allowed. And that is what was evaluated in this case to determine whether or not the permit could be deemed approved.
So to your question about are specific health benchmarks in this area considered in a permit decision? The answer in your practice, no.
No.
So I did wanna have them talk a little bit about the evaluation because that part is also important. So, but thank you very much for bringing that up. Let me get on the other side of you if you don't mind.
Are open violations taken into consideration when making your decisions on this? Because it seems like EES Coke has open and unaddressed violations currently for air emissions.
Yeah, thanks for that question, Katie. Do you mind grabbing that microphone from Mark and talking a little bit about what we're looking at as far as compliance status with the facility?
Right. So thank you for the question. That is a good question that we get a lot. I guess to answer your first part of. I guess to answer your first part about whether a company can get a permit if they have a violation notice, the way that it's written in the law, that if a company comes in and requests a permit to install, if that equipment that they're requesting a permit for is able to show that it can comply with the air quality rules and regulations, and obviously we do our own analysis to see if they can, the proposed equipment can comply as well, then we're legally obligated to issue the permit. You know, that doesn't take into account anything about a violation notice. Now, there was a violation notice most recently issued in November, and I think that has been mentioned in the press. So the way our process works with violation notices is, you know, if we determine as a violation, we issue a notice. A company has three weeks to respond to us with what caused the problem and what they're going to do to fix it. And if they don't respond adequately, then we send a second notice. And then after that, we look at whether we need to escalate something to enforcement. In this particular case, the most recent violation, the company did respond in a timely manner. They did respond to every allegation that we made of non-compliance with actions that they did take or plan to take. So at the moment, it is considered resolved. However, you know, we still constantly evaluate these things. So we're going to circle back after everything that they've proposed has been done and see, you know, kind of make another determination at that time and things could change. But at the moment, you know, based on the way that our process works, we did get a sufficient response and it is considered addressed.
So I just want to make sure we have a follow-up.
And we cannot issue a permit for a, if they apply for an application to correct the violation and that application will not correct the violation, we cannot issue that permit. But we can issue a permit that a facility has a violation for another source, if that other source will.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Okay, okay.
To follow up on my last question, strike me what I misunderstood. Well, you say we, we don't meet the standards here, but you can still, you have any growth. Does that mean we're putting out more particulate matter into the environment or more pollutants in the environment?
Yeah, that's a great question. So Mark, can you talk a little bit about, and I might touch this to Alec as well, just to talk about how modeling comes into play, but how when we're looking at permit applications like this, they still have to meet those existing regulations, which in this case they have to meet that lower P M two point five limit in order to be able to get a permit. But then I do want, I think it might be nice for you to talk a little bit about how modeling comes into play with this.
That is correct. As I said before, if an area is not meeting the standard, it does not mean no future growth is allowed. It means there are restrictions on future growth and there are ways that future growth must be evaluated. One of those ways is that when a major modification or a major source of something, which in this case, this application doesn't qualify because it's small, but when a major source or major modification for the pollutant that it's not in attainment wants to be doing place, that company must provide offsets, which are basically a reduction of the same pollutant elsewhere in the non-attainment area. And those offsets are at a ratio that is actually greater than the amount they want to put in. So if this was the case, it looked like a hundred tons, they would have to at least offset that with a hundred and ten tons of a reduction elsewhere. But there are no required reductions like that for minor sources or minor modifications.
So when you said minor, you're meaning something that's less than a certain amount of.
Less than a different threshold. The threshold varies by pollutant, but those thresholds are measured in terms of tons per year. For P M ten, the major modification threshold is ten tons. The non-attainment threshold for the major sources, a hundred tons. And again, that threshold for change varies by different pollutant. Now that said, as a minor modification, we still check this application to ensure via modeling, which Alex can talk about how that's done, but we checked via dispersion modeling to show that the requested emissions would meet the standard on their own. And that was done using what's called the significant emission level. And that impact or that value is actually less than the National Ambient Air Quality Standard.
Like more restricted.
It's more conservative. Yes.
So that was a long answer. If you don't mind, I'm going to have Alec talk a little bit about modeling and then if you have a follow-up, we'll come back to it. Does that sound good? Okay, so Alec, do you mind talking about a little bit perspective on what Mark was just talking about? Nope, you're good.
Oh, so yeah, Grace and Mark are your question about how, why she goes into the model, how it's actually built. So what we do is we take the parameters that's given from the facility and we build it in a model. And we use what's called receptors, which are virtual monitors, like I used to, like I usually like to explain it. And those are virtual monitors that go out around six miles around the facility and the surrounding area. And that usually just tells us the impact that is expected based on five years of meteorological data. So as Mark already mentioned, the significant impact level for P M ten and P M two five was the impacts from P M ten and P M two five were below the significant impact level.
So when you're looking at that, that level, that level is, so like what I think about it is almost like stair stepping. So step one, you look at what we call it, the significant impact level, a big word for like a low level of impact. If it passes that, we're, we're good. And if it doesn't pass that, then you go to like another step in the process. So this is the most restrictive way we can look at this.
Yes.
And it still was underneath that.
Yeah, the first, yeah, the first step of that, like Jen says, that is pretty restrictive and conservative that we look at first. And then for the modeling, could be it.
So do you have a follow-up on that? No, okay, appreciate that.
How does this model account for the emissions from neighboring facilities as well? Is it taking into account the cumulative impact of the region?
So Alec, can you speak a little bit to that?
Yes, we look at, we actually put in background concentrations, we call it the aerial kind of emission from both sources. That's already built into the model. So the impacts from that is including the area of sources and other emissions going into the impacts. About the source from E E S Coke, that is your question.
I think the question extends to a following question, which is, does the modeling take into account synergistic effects of unique combinations of pollution considering things like how ozone, particulate matter, sulfur dioxide might be together affecting in combining unique ways to affect health?
Go ahead, Alec.
Yeah, so that's a P M two five, it's going to be secondarily informed. So we look at ozone with different calculations to see ozone as to other factors that create P M two five secondarily. So that is included within the model that we look at.
But not how, not how like sulfur dioxide and all of the next together might synergistically affect health and maybe be involved in some of the highest rates of asthma and heart disease in this communities.
That's how I mean, hear your first part of the question.
Oh, I was just saying, like, so you explained the connection between P M two point five and ozone, but not necessarily the consideration of how multiple pollutants, some of them above attainment, some of them within attainment might be combining, affecting the body in a unique way. There is research that shows how levels of ozone and sulfur dioxide and sulfuric acid mist and particulate matter, even when they're within thresholds, when they're all present, even within the thresholds, have unique negative effects that could be to blame for some of the disproportionately high levels of health burdens that were based in this community.
Yeah, thanks, Brian, for that. No, the model isn't a cumulative impact model. It's used for air modeling. So yeah, it's a good point to bring up, though, for sure. Other questions? Teresa, I'll get right to you.
As any area of concern internally knows, the law isn't necessarily there to protect them. And as we know in this society, the law is more and more in favor of corporation. So as baffling as it is that there would even be consideration that yet another plant would be allowed to go into production in that area. If it's going to happen because you are the citizen's only protection, then who then can the citizens actually go to or help to finally get relief from everything that has happened in that zip code in an area that has two percent higher than the rest of the country for asthma, cancers, nasal cancer, et cetera?
Yeah, thank you for, for bringing that up. It is something that we get questions on quite often. Our panelists, of course, have mentioned the way we have to use the rules and regulations available to us to make sure that this permit is as protected as possible if it goes forward. So your question about who can we go to, who do we talk to? I mean, really, when it comes down to it, rules have to change in order for us to be able to do things a lot differently than we're doing. We do try our best to make sure that we're looking at all the rules and regulations that apply. That's why we're coming to talk to you tonight. So I do appreciate you bringing it up. It's really important. Teresa, do you still have a question? That's why your hand is not up. So I wanted to make sure you didn't change your mind.
It's out of control. You know, we ain't in control of that. You have to realize that. My question is, for clarification, you said the National Ambient Air Quality Standard, right? So there's no way you can consider the local air quality standard for an area that's overburdened? Or you choose not to use it? And is it in your power and purview to use it when we know that this area has been a non-attainment for sulfur dioxide, ozone, particulate matter, and other chemicals? So we keep on talking about national standard. You keep comparing a poor, low-income, mostly black Hispanic community to more richer white communities that do not have this. So this has been, oh, am I really old? This has been over twenty years we've heard this same song, song and dance. I see more of you than I see my family that live right across the street in River Rouge because we continue to have these hearings. We continue to get this rope mentality. You guys are road blockers. You're not here to answer the questions that we need answered. What is your power to look at it locally? We got St. Mary's. We have the guidance. We have a superior. We are not going to get E D Levy coming in with a slag crusher. We got communist line. We got frists. We got U S Gibson. We have all this concentrated in this area. But you guys want to use something across the nation to compare an area that you know, you know the area is bad, you know they violate, you know they bad actors. So I'm just frustrated and tired because I've grown up with you guys. Twenty eight, thirty years, that's a long time. I grew up with you guys to get the same answers. We're talking to brick walls when we know the same mentality you guys had twenty years ago when you were Michigan, what, M V E Q. You, you changed the name, but you have not changed the culture. We want you to understand, when you look at the second screener, what's the assurance that it won't increase the particulate matter in that area? We know after all these years, every time a permit goes in, it says, we're going to pollute this much and it meets the standard. And then here, what we, what we get is up here and it's a violation. All this modeling, what you need to model is the health of the people. What you need to do is a health impact assessment of the people, not of the area. Thank you.
So what are your intent, what are the intentions for the permit with everything being said today? The research, the health risks, just the history of everything. Does this approval of this permit benefit the people of the community in the long run?
Yeah, thanks for asking that. So I'll talk a little bit about what happens after the comment period closes, if that is helpful for people. So you heard in that this earlier, welcome everybody to the meeting. So what will happen after the comment period closes is all the comments that we get from either the hearing that came in during the comment period. We have other ways of getting them through email, through voicemail, through the mail mail. Either way, all those comments will be evaluated. We'll make sure that we're looking at them in respect to this proposed project. At the end of the day, we will write a document called the response to comments document where all the comments will be responded to. And then the permit, the decision maker will make a decision on the permit. That decision will be either to grant the permit as written, grant the permit with changes, or deny the permit. Now, the permit can be denied if it doesn't meet air quality rules and regulations. So that's what happens afterwards. There's not really a timeline on that. So we will let everybody that's in this room, everybody who's online with us will know about that decision once it's made. So you'll be directly notified of that decision.
So you just said that if the air, it doesn't meet the air quality standards, which it sounds to me like you already know that it does not meet the air quality standard. So, but you're not taking into consideration this community. Is your job not to protect public health?
Yep, that's a, it's a great question. Yes.
And I have a follow-up.
Okay, sorry, no.
A yes or no.
Good question. The answer is yes.
Okay, so then I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, Mark, we said earlier that it's okay for them to have more particulate matter in this area as long as they're offsetting it somewhere else. So that doesn't sound like you're protecting all the public health. It sounds like you're protecting public health in certain areas.
So that's a great, thank you for bringing that up. Mark talked a little bit about that. That doesn't actually come into play, this permit. So Mark, I don't know if you could talk a little bit about, so again, this goes back to, and I want to have him talk to, to clarify this because when he was talking about the the offsets, that is for much larger projects than this, much larger amounts of pollution. It doesn't come into play here. So when we're looking at projects like this, we're starting off with what Alec talked about and what Grace talked about with that significant impact level because that's the most restrictive. So we have to see if the project can meet that level before we would go any farther. So a project Mark mentioned, the projects that have over ten tons of emissions or over a hundred tons of emissions, then those offsets would come into play. So they don't come into play with this project at all. So if that's helpful, maybe a little bit. So I saw your hand up.
So I keep hearing that, you know, this complies with the National Ambient Air Quality Standard, right? For them multiple times. Yet, last week, Bill Bruce wrote a letter to the EPA saying, what? What did he say? He suggested that all of Wayne County be considered non-attainment under the new National Ambient Air Quality Standards, which we know are already the law. Those were already implemented. That is what is in place right now. This area, the three-year average, Trinity. Can anyone, can anyone tell me what the three-year average for Trinity was?
Maybe you might be able to.
Give me a minute and we'll.
Yeah. I can tell you that I know for sure, twenty twenty-three, these local, the, the monitors that are all over here, they were violating the old standard. We have two, there are two monitors over here that the three-year average violates the old standard. And now we drop it by three. The new standard is nine micrograms per, per meter cube. And where are we at? We're violating the old standard at 12. So it's, it's just honestly, just be honest with people. You're telling people that this, this is not going to impact their health, that it's not going to impact the National Ambient Quality Standards? Let's be honest, that's bullshit. For real. Just be honest with people. Tell them, what is the current situation that they're facing? Right now, we're, we're out the window. We're, we're over three points above the new standard. And let's be clear about what that standard is, right? It is a health-based standard. The point of the standard is to protect public health. Anything above that, we know, will have an impact on people's health. And PM 2.5 in particular is dangerous at all levels. Yet, nine, this new standard, based on all the research, thousands of pages, if y'all have checked out the EPA studies, the EPA supplemental report that they did. It's, it's clear as day, y'all. So just cut the bullshit, please. And it's not just for me. I'm here, I'm an attorney, right? I'm with the Green Lakes Memorial Law Center. You all, you might know me from, you know, lawsuits and all that stuff. But I'm here all day, for real, from people that are struggling to breathe. So, and the rules, this idea that we have to change the rules is nonsense. The question is, are you willing to use the rules that you have in a way that benefits people over profit? And I know you guys, I may not be the decision makers. I don't mean to like hearken on you. For real. I know it's probably above you. But what can you do to help these people out? This is just, it's just injustice after injustice. Come on. What can we do here? I don't know where to stop, I'm going to show up, but the last thing, just real quick. The significant, significant impact level, just so folks understand, it's not, that's, that's an emission that will be added on top of the current air quality. So, right now, we know that the current air quality is unhealthy, is unsafe, based on the current standard. Anything above that is adding to it. Again, let's just cut the nonsense and be honest with people. If you can't do anything about it, that's fine. But don't beat around the bush and tell us that, you know, this is, this is going to be fine for everybody. People over here are already started, you know? They don't want to be lied to.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Appreciate that. I agree with a hundred percent of what you just said. I've been here all my life and I'm looking around this room and everybody in here has been here for about forty, fifty, fifty, seventy years old, easy. We're basically asking you about the climate, the culture and everything here, the air. The air is poor quality. I'm sitting here reading this, I'm going, 2.5 exposure can be harmful. You say pre-existing conditions. Do you realize this environment has given us these conditions? It has given us bad hearts, bad lungs, okay? And I don't see cancer down here, okay? My wife has cancer. Her parents both have cancer. There's a long run of this. All we ask, you know, you're bringing more emissions, more emissions. You have to know that this is one of the worst areas in the country. You know, but you're using a national guideline, which isn't really fair. That's not fair to us. Okay, you shouldn't be adding anything because politically, they're going to turn them around here, big corporations, I'm going to do this, I'm going to wash this hand, I'm going to do this. And I'm going to add a little air over here, take some over here to balance it out. It's not fair to us. You know it's not fair to us. No, we're just asking, you know, you're supposed to be our mouthpiece. We're asking you to help us, okay? And we're not seeing that. She's going back twenty years, but we can go back further than that. You know, it's really sad. You know, you have a damn dying community here because of the atmosphere and we're asking you for help. 2.5, 3.0, forget the numbers. We're hurting around here, okay? It's a dying community because of the pollutants. You gotta give us some relief. You have to somewhere down the line. Please.
Thank you for saying that. Thank you for sharing your feelings.
I do just want to reiterate one of Andrew's comments and kind of frame it as a question. So he highlighted that the Michigan's recommended area designations for the 2024 and you know PM 2.5 air quality standard, Wayne County should be designated as non-attainment. So why would we add more PM, like quite simply?
No, that's a great question. So I'm going to probably have, I don't know, I was thinking that maybe Alec might be able to talk a little bit and Amy might be able to talk a little bit about how we would look at that. So when it comes to permitting, and it might have been lost, Mark mentioned, we've been looking at that more strict standard with permitting. So the area isn't designated into non-attainment yet. It's just a recommendation. So we fully expect that it will be in non-attainment and EPA takes a little bit of a while. Because the way the rules are, so rules don't allow us to necessarily look at those things, but with permitting, we can. So we're already looking at that nine standard, not the 12. So we're looking at that lower standard already. There's a lot of, you guys were talking a lot on, you know, Andrew brought it up, but Teresa brought it up a little bit, looking at the air quality in this area. So when we are looking at modeling, when we're looking at monitoring, when we're making our recommendations on non-attainment, we are looking at what our air monitors in these areas are measuring. So Amy, I don't know if you can talk a little bit about how many monitors we have in this area, especially the ones that are looking at PM, you know, turning PM 2.5 and that kind of thing. That just might be helpful for people to see where that information has been gathered. Because there has been in these areas, not, you know, across the state or something like that. We are looking at the air quality here.
Teresa, did you have a question about monitoring?
Yeah. Hold on Teresa, let me get the mic so everybody can hear you.
Yes. In regards to particulate matter, for the last three and a half years, we've had, we see it. We actually see the dust in the air because of the construction of the Gordy Howe Bridge. We actually see it coming from Superior and Macaw and St. Mary's Cement. Does that come into factory? If it does, we, and then we already know, you know, and of your experience, that you know the air quality is bad. And because of the construction of the Gordy Howe Bridge, it has taken the particulate matter up significantly in our air. Because all those companies are creating concrete and stuff to go and build that bridge. And so to look at the monitor at St. Mary's, to look at the one at Southwest, it has to show that those, the particulate matters off the chart. And there's no sense about it. If we can see it, and for the last three and a half years, it has been increased with the construction of the Gordy Howe Bridge, I don't see how your modeling is correct. I don't see how your data is correct. We drive through a dust storm every day, in the winter and the summer. So the modeling, something is wrong. Something is wrong if we can actually see it.
Right. So I'm going to address a couple of things real quick and then pull up Alec coming on the modeling. So recently.
I'm sorry, you said we have monitors.
Yes. We have a lot of monitors around here. Teresa knows that. So the Trinity Monitor is at Ford Street and Woodmere Cemetery. There is one at Military Park, which is on the other side of 75, over off Military Street. There is the one at Southwest, used to be Southwest High School. We call it Southwest Detroit now. And that one has been in existence since the seventies and we have all the data from back then that we can look back and see how things have changed very long term there. There's the one in Dearborn by Slinis Schools, which is directly across from the
Cleveland Cliffs.
The Ford Rouge Plant. It used to be the, we were talking about how many name changes the Steel Mill has had there. But I think it's Cleveland Cliffs now, but originally it was Ford. So we have all of those locations and we do have some south of here. We have the one at New Mount Herman. So specifically the Military Park, Trinity, and DP4, which is the Detroit Precinct, Fourth Precinct off of Ford Street, were all put in to assess what is going on during the construction of the Gordy Howe Bridge. And then after, when, after. The feeling is that after the bridge construction is done, that even with the traffic coming across, the particulate matter is going to be lower from that area. Just because there won't be dirt, unpaved dirt and as much construction vehicles around. So that's what we're hoping the data shows us, but we're still collecting that data and evaluating it. One thing that has happened in the last couple of years, the EPA has asked the states to move to continuous PM 2.5 monitors. So with that transition from the old filter-based ones to the new continuous ones, the continuous ones read a little bit higher than the old filter-based ones did. Because they're better at capturing all of the particulate in the area. So that's why we've had a little bit of a bump up in some of our readings, which have been since, even since the Gordy Howe Bridge construction started. So we've had a recent bump up. But that's actually, it's not good that it's bumped up, but that actually tells you what you're actually breathing in. So it's more accurate data for you guys to look at.
And it's all available online.
It is all available online through the website. And so currently the Trinity site and the Military Park site are the highest. And right now they're running around 12, the high 12s, low 13s for a three-year average. So we can still, since they evaluated the permit using the nine, the standard of nine, that we're still hoping that we can get the area down into attainment over time by other standards that are, that are kicking and through the federal system. And hopefully, influence from the Gordy Howe Bridge construction will come down and that will help the standard go back down lower.
Do you mind, I wanted to have Alec talk a little bit about how monitors, how the data from those monitoring stations in these areas are used when we do models for particulate matter.
Yeah, so as I mentioned before, we use five years of meteorological data from the area, the most closest station, which I believe for this one, it was, I think it was the Weather Service, the Detroit Airport, that's we use for the meteorological data. And we also look at the background concentration, which I mentioned, that goes for what Amy said, the three-year average that we look at and we put into the model as well. And going off of the monitors that you listed, and as I've said before, the receptors, which I explained were more virtual monitors. With this model specifically, there I believe nineteen thousand six hundred twenty-three of those virtual monitors around the grid of this area and going six miles in either direction around this area. So that kind of helps fill in the gaps of what we can expect the particulate matter to, the impact from that particular matter.
Yeah, thanks for talking about that.
First of all, Amy, I feel like what you guys are doing in monitoring is some of the best work at Eagle. You know, particularly, you know, this area, this is the most densely monitored area in the entire state, it should be. The one thing that I just wanted to point out, the EPA is saying that based on their modeling, Wayne County is still going to be in non-attainment in 2032. So we're not even, I mean, not only are we not close, like this is going to be years of people dealing with unhealthy levels of air quality. So just going back to this permit, it doesn't make sense to add a single drop more particulate matter when we know it's already unsafe and it's going to be unsafe for a really long time.
So there's just, there's one thing I wanted to mention in hearing what you're saying. So just to, I don't know if this was a little bit, because we've been talking about some other stuff. So one of the things that Grace mentioned in her presentation is this work is currently already being done on by a contractor, right? So they're already having particulate emissions from this contracting work, okay? So I think it is in the proposed project summary. Yeah, thank you, Ebony. So one of the things, just to your point, just for perspective, so if we can remember back what Grace was talking about, what the company is proposing is to take that work and not have it at the contractor anymore and put it inside of a building, so it is better controlled than it is currently being controlled. So again, not refuting what you're saying, but just for perspective, in case people didn't miss that or came in late, it is going to be something that is a little bit better than what the company is already doing. So even though this does feel like added particulate, it really is particulate that's part of being generated at a different part of South Valley. So not to say that the contractor is going to move, we don't, we can't guarantee that. It could be, you know, a both and. But just, just for perspective, I wanted to just make sure we brought that up, that this process is expected to be better controlled than.
Is there a way that, as part of this, sorry, is there, is there a possibility that as part of the permit, that they are basically required to shut down that other piece? Is that offset?
Well, it is, a different company owns it. So that's, they own, the contractor owns the other operation. So, yeah. So hold on one second, I'm trying to get to hands and the order they received. And then Caitlin, do you have more questions online?
We do. We have several questions online and two people with their hands up. So I just want to acknowledge, thank you for the people online with questions. You did put in the chat, but we are going to people in onsite first. Hopefully we do have a time to come back to at least the hands up.
Sounds good.
Mine's pretty quick. It's got another yes and no, yes or no element to it, I think. So the state's EJ screen mapping tools confirm that this community ranks in the highest percentile for criminal pollution and pre-existing health vulnerabilities. That's really clear. We made this point over and over again. To my understanding, Rule 228 gives Eagle the authority to enforce stricter emissions limits when existing standards are failing to protect public health. So my question is, with exceedingly high and unique health burdens here, has Eagle ever taken into consideration the unique local health burdens as a basis for denying a permit in this area? And do they ever plan to use existing, pre-existing health burdens as a basis for enforcing stricter emissions limits that could result in a denial of a permit?
Yeah, so great question. Thank you. The answer to the, your first part of the question would be no, we haven't done that. I don't think we have the ability in our current rules to do that.
Rule 228 gives explicitly gives authority to enforce stricter emissions when existing standards are failing. And so it's pretty clear that existing standards are failing, considering that we face unique risks and vulnerabilities to this pollution. So it appears we do have the authority. It's never been used. Do we ever plan on using that authority to take into account local health burdens when making a permit decision? Are we never, or are we, is the plan at Eagle currently to never consider local pre-existing health conditions and just assume that the national standards are good enough? Are we ever going to take into account local health burdens to potentially deny a permit on the basis of enforcing stricter emissions limits?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. We don't really have the, quite the level of folks here to be able to answer that question, but it would be a really good comment, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I wanted to bring attention to a really key point that I think Amy made earlier. She spoke about how the filters in the past were worse at picking up and were under-reporting the particulate matter levels for decades. Being that we could have been way out of attainment for, since 1970, since those were being used. And secondly, like, I think the community deserves to know what a local is. So like what his opinion just was, just like to boil it down. We need to, it needs to be clear when one of these permits might actually be denied and not just restricted. When new development might actually be told no firmly because people are scared of it or die. Because we've been out of attainment for decades now, reporting the Amy and the filter that we're under-reporting. So the same thing that everyone said here tonight, like when this push comes to shove, and if we're not going to say no to these folks, at least let the community know clearly when that threshold becomes the reality. So that we know, and then everyone can be held accountable. Because it feels that we're way past the threshold.
Yeah, thank you for that. So Amy, I, just can you talk a little? Yeah, thank you for that. So Amy, I, just can you talk a little bit about the technology change? Because they, yeah.
The technology change, um PM two point five monitoring came around, you know, right around two thousand from EPA. And back then there was not a way to do continuous monitoring. So they, the way they defined the two point five was using a certain instrument with a certain impactor. It was called the wind's impactor, and it was just the way the particulate matter came into the instrument. Since these filters would stay outside, in the summertime, some of the ammonias would evaporate off the filter before it's taken to lab to be analyzed. The amount of difference was, is only around ten percent, so it's not a huge amount. Up until when they designated the PM twelve standard, we weren't really anywhere close to the two five standard. So it's been, as they, it can look bad sometimes when you hear, oh, they've lowered a standard and this area is out of attainment now. And everybody thinks, oh, our our particulate has gone up. But in reality, it's just the particular level has stayed the same. It's just that they're lowering the standard down below it, so you're out of attainment now. So it was twelve and then we were in attainment, we did not deny we're not in attainment. But that doesn't change the amount of particulate, you know, one day to the next, of how much that is out there. What we have to do after this, that federal government says, okay, you're officially out of attainment, then we have a whole nother group that um works to figure out what rules do we need to change to get us back into attainment? And that's what hopefully the levels will, you know, they'll enact rules that'll make the levels come back down.
Thanks, Amy. So Teresa?
Yeah, Teresa.
I got a couple of questions. I'm a little confused. One, I wanted to ask, are there any rules, policies or laws on the books for you, E, uh, to Eagle, to consider cumulative impact? That's one question. The other question is, if you'd say currently we're averaging around twelve to thirteen, and it's currently nine, and then the gentleman next to you said, we've been modeling for three years. In that three years, we've been above, so we've been in in non attainment. Then you have a new company coming in, they want to put one point six tons more in the air. And is this new source review of this screener? Shouldn't that be considered?
So, so the one point six is total, excuse me, total PM. The, so all of the particulate matters that's out there, no matter what size it is. And then what we look at are the different sizes of particulate matter. So Grace will have to answer the question, because I don't remember what PM ten was. But for PM two point five, it's um point two eight is what the increase, and the permit says it will be. But that's not what you guys are breathing at your location. That amount is getting dispersed, as Alex can talk about, with the air. So that's, doesn't mean that every monitor is going to see that much of it, or you people are not going to, it's additive. You are not going to be breathing in every day that much more of that two five. You know, depending on where you live and and how the wind blows.
I have a question with that. What you say, not that much more. We're already telling you what we're breathing is harmful.
Right.
Any minute addition is harmful to us, okay? So that's what we're looking at. We're looking at the non attainment. Great analogy, Nick Willard from Great Lakes Environmental Law said, if you got a kid that's fourteen years old, your kid has never breathed clean air. Because we've been in non attainment for more than fourteen years. And what, the other question I asked was not answered. Are there any laws on the book that you can consider cumulative impact? And we know there are.
So thanks for that, Teresa. When it comes to cumulative impact and what you're referring to, we do have some rules that we look at, some things cumulatively, but not in the same way that you're thinking. Like Brian, it's Brian, right? I'm sorry, Brian, like Brian brought up where we're looking at all the different fluids, how they interact with each other synergistically and impact the body. If you asked if there was rules on the books about it, and we don't have those rules on the books when it comes to cumulative. Looking a little bit, yeah, at cumulative.
Are you using it, is there?
No, this isn't, they did not come into play in this instance.
Why not?
Because they were not applicable to this project.
Okay, what about uh community lines when they were given one last year and about EDVing last year? And all the others that were given permits last year? None of those qualified when we looked at the cumulative impact?
I cannot recall that off the top of my head. It was when we're talking about rule two twenty-eight, that's correct. Let me get to Ebony.
The table qualified, but the rule's never been used.
I just got a quick question. Um, under the proposed thing that EES Coke wants to do, um, and from Grace, um, presentation, it says that, um, and then you reminded us, Jennifer, that it's already um a process and a space being put in place for for this. And they're moving it to like more of a enclosed area of doing this. Um, my question goes to how are we going to um safeguard our community? It looks like on your map that the new location is way closer to us as residential people in radius of the island. So it's it's gonna be a lot closer to us, it's gonna be enclosed. Are there any considerations going to be taken into place with with approving or denying this proposal where um they can safeguard our community uh in case of an emergency?
Oh, like if something happens where it doesn't, it's not working, or the, there's extra fugitive dust, or whatever.
When the guy that catches the fire, like.
Or any secondary, they said that it's being relocated from another place, that's like a third party. A safeguard where it's a third party will just pick up another shipper and still burn on their own and they get their own permit that's separate from this, that's not going to be taken into consideration of their pollution. It's like, um, picking up, like, you guys said, you don't put um public health risk in into consideration with approval department or a cumulative impact model. Do you put into consideration any safeguards or emergency preparedness model? Like, that's Alex's question, a Mark question, but is that considered in the decision-making of the project?
Yeah, no, that's a good question. And actually, it might not be um the model per se, but when Grace was talking about things that were in the proposed permit, I mean, she talked about the fugitive dust plan and the preventative maintenance and malfunction abatement plan. So that is something that, I don't know, Grace, if you don't mind, talking a little bit about what the plans are again. And then Katie's can talk a little bit about how, because EES already has some of these plans in place, like more broadly for their processes, she might be able to talk about how she, as an inspector, makes sure that they're actually following those plans. Does that sound okay? All right, Grace, go ahead.
Yeah, um, so currently in the permit or the proposed permit that we have out for you guys, there is a requirement for preventative maintenance and a malfunction abatement plan. These are both going to come into play in case there is a malfunction that is occurring. And they also have to do preventative maintenance to make sure that there is a malfunction. I'm going to let Katie talk a little bit more about that, and the district is usually more in charge of those. There's additionally also the requirement to update or have a new fugitive dust control plan. This is to make sure that they are controlling that fugitive dust that is coming from the source. I also want to hit on a note that you had said earlier, um, about the third party contract that is also currently being done on Zog Island. And then I'll pass it over to Katie.
Is that the one that the is operating right now, that we were talking about?
Yes, there is a third party or a contractor that's doing this work.
Okay, um, I'm not exactly sure what else to add to what Grace said, but yeah. Basically, the company is going to update plans if the permit gets issued to include this new equipment. And the plans are going to specify exactly what they're going to do to control the dust and to make sure the foam suppressant that they're putting on the coke to control the dust is working properly, how much they're going to put on, when they're going to put, when they're going to apply it. And then they're going to have to keep a record of all those things. So when I go out there for an inspection, number one, I'm going to look at it myself and see that it's working properly at the time, but I'm also going to look at all those records to see that they're doing what they said they were going to be doing, to ensure that it's working properly.
Thanks. Oops, sorry, Katie.
No, I just, the third party contractor does have a permit. Um, but it's for, part of it is for Coke that's on the island. So it doesn't allow them to bring something from outside onto the island to screen. So the company's EES Coke isn't making any more Coke from this project, it's the same amount. So either it goes to the third party or it goes to the screener. But overall, the amount that's being screened isn't being increased, if that helps. So it's not going to be like a double operation necessarily. If it's screened, yeah, if it's new equipment, if it gets approved, then it won't be screened at the other place.
So we have a couple of folks with their hands up online, and if it's okay with everybody here, do you, did you have a follow-up? Oh, yeah, sure, hold on a second.
Question earlier about shutting that down then. Will that still be allowed to operate, or will you guys actually be actively shutting that down?
It will still be allowed to operate, because again, that's by a, the permits to a different.
Yeah, it's a different.
The reality is, if they do not have work, their permit's probably not going to be useful to them. If they don't have anything to do, but again, we cannot void out a permit without a company requesting that it be voided. And because the contractor is not EES Coke, they cannot ask that permit to be voided.
Okay, thanks.
Can I just make a quick call to that?
Uh, yes. I just want to make, I'll try to get to the folks online if we can, but it's definitely fine.
And there's no way of telling EES Coke, they cannot use that contractor or other refining. So in theory, could they use their own facility as well as the contractor's facility?
In theory, they could, but the fact is Katie said, they're not making any more coke. They they're making X amount of coke, and it will either all be screened by the contractor, all be screened by themselves, or some combination thereof. But it's not like they're increasing their coke production so that there will be a need for more total screening between the two.
So we do have a couple of hands raised online, and we have a lot of questions in the chat. So thanks to everybody online who's been really patient. If we don't get to your questions, we will try to get to you directly and respond to you directly after the meeting is over. Um, but Caitlin, if you don't mind, go ahead and unmute our first person, and then we'll have them ask their question.
Yep. So the first person I'm going to unmute online is Carolyn C. So you should see that you are unmuted, Carolyn. So whenever you are ready, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you should be able to ask your question.
Hi, um, I, my question just goes along the lines of what we've heard already from so many people is how are, from what I'm understanding, it doesn't sound like cumulative impacts are being considered. And I I'm just not sure how Eagle can be saying in good faith that they're protecting the health of residents without considering cumulative impacts. You know, I work with a number of organizations across the city, um, and a- across every district. And there is not a single district where I haven't spoken to somebody who has known a child who has died as a result of asthma. And in circumstances like that, I cannot understand a justification that would increase emissions at all in the city. And I cannot understand a process that would not consider cumulative impacts. And and so I'd like to know, how how does, how does Eagle consider that? How how do you uh justify or or explain that cumulative impacts is not um in in your rules for consideration?
Yeah, Carolyn, thank you for bringing that up. It's definitely something that we get asked a lot. You've heard it, we brought up several times here in the room as well. And I know we hear people's frustration when it comes to how we do or do not look at cumulative impacts. And when it comes to this specific project, we didn't, we weren't able to even look at the rules that we do have that somewhat, we'll look at things cumulatively. So do appreciate you bringing up that and sharing the work that you do in your community as well. Caitlin, you have someone else with their hand up, go ahead.
Yep, um, the next person with their hand up is Deb S. So Deb, you should see that you are um able to unmute yourself, and you can go ahead and ask your question.
Okay, um, I have, can you hear me?
Yeah, Deb, go ahead.
Okay, so I don't think that Carolyn's answer for question was really answered by any of Eagle. Um, I've been coming to, you know, some meetings, hearings for quite some couple of decades, um, off and on, not, you know, kind of when we're, it's a big issue. And pet, pet, uh, is it pet coke? I have, I have several issues. Is this pet coke that was on the riverfront illegally uh in mountains dumped on uh Matt Maroon, uh Ambassador Bridge owner's land? Uh, generated out of Marathon, uh, it's very toxic, very toxic. And they were offloading it onto ships and loading it and dumping it and just craziness.
Yep, this is not the pet coke.
Is it pet coke?
No, it is not.
Okay, okay. Great, but we already, but we know it's toxic with the PMs and so forth. So and we know, and everybody's been talking about it. Our area is not, this is non attainment, all right? Our area is non attainment. That was at your public hearing three weeks ago. That was related to designation and saying, oh, we're in attainment now. Because um that was with the SO two. And we couldn't quite understand that, couldn't understand the modeling and how uh we thought the EPA had to bring some uh levels down, and then we would be out of attainment um again. But we know, related to PMs and many other toxins, we are non attainment. So again, with what Carolyn was saying and others in your, in the room, we've got to get to the point of looking at cumulative impacts from the various sources. What I don't understand is at the Coke site on Zog Island, and I've been on Manzog Island even back in the day when steel uh was being produced. I'd like to know, is absolutely everything with pet, with coke, excuse me, uh, with coke, not pet coke, um, is it all covered? Not just some of it where it's moving or screening and, you know, is it being totally covered? Um, what they, what they refer to as enclosed? And it is not, uh, the particulate matter is not escaping per se? And, you know, is is that in place?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't want to cut you off, I apologize. But I think that Grace could probably talk a little bit to that to let you know um how the company proposed, if that's okay?
Well, yes, existing, there's existing operations. Is it all enclosed? The new stuff, is it going to be all enclosed? And um, uh, the third party, I mean, are they under scrutiny and have screenings? And, you know, where does this pet, where does this coke go? What do they do with it? Is it being transported off Zog Island? And and where and how?
Okay, yeah, sure. So let's have, I want Grace to talk a little bit about uh what the company proposed, and then I'm going to have Katie talk a little bit about what goes on with the Coke, if that's okay. And then it, we are after seven, I believe, or we are going, this is going to be our last answered question uh for tonight. it, we are after seven, I believe, or we are going, this is gonna be our last answered question, uh, for tonight, then we're gonna take a little bit of a break. We're gonna shift her into the hearing portion, so thanks so much for your question, Deb, so hold on a second, Grace, go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Sure, uh, so just, do we, I guess, do we say, if you wanna say when the, like, what was the proposed project?
Yeah, like what's covered, um, not what's covered in the project, but what is physically covered, yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was going over the right thing before I went into a more of a tangent. So, the, some coke, which is that coke that is gonna be from the cooling area that is removed during the process, is gonna be outdoors. In addition, so is that hopper, and then there's a couple of tran, uh, conveyors that are also gonna be outdoors. The screening building itself, or screening itself is gonna be occurring inside the building along with transfer points from the, uh, some hopper, along with from the primary conveyor. In addition, the transportation from the screener to the bins themselves is gonna be enclosed in that thing.
So Katie, do you mind?
Do I talking a little bit about what goes on with the coke itself?
Yeah. Uh, just briefly, um, I, I guess I would say in general, the whole coke-making process is pretty much enclosed. Um, coal gets charged into an oven, that whole, that part is enclosed, it bakes in the oven. That's enclosed. The oven does have to be open to push the coke out into a rail car-type bin. Uh, but the pushing is only takes about a minute or two, and then the oven is closed back up. The hot coke in the rail car has a hood over it, which is pulling any emissions off of the hot coke to an air filtration device known as a baghouse. Then the hot coke in the car goes into a flinch tower, and gets, um, diluted with thousands or tenths of thousands of gallons of water. And then the coke is dumped out of the car onto a platform, that part is not enclosed. And then it proceeds into the screening that Grace talked about.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, and where does it go?
Yes, so, um, a lot of the coke is loaded into rail or truck and goes to, um, iron and steel mills. So a lot of it, I'm told, goes to, um, Cleveland Cliffs and Dearborn to be used in their blast furnaces. And then, uh, some of it also goes to Canada for some other, um, iron, iron and steel processes.
Cool, all right, thank you, thank you for that. So, one other thing I just wanna mention is, we do have to be out of this building at 8:30, so I apologize for that. Hopefully, we'll be able to get to everybody's comments, uh, we want to definitely try to do that. So let's take a quick break, like three minutes, if you guys don't mind, we're just gonna shift stuff around here really quick, and then we'll get right into the hearing portion of the night, so, um, if you wanna let people know online. Oh, and then, if you guys, I- And Caitlin, you can put this in the chat. So Caitlin will put this in the chat as well, but the public comment period closes on the 24th. So again, if you're not staying to make a comment tonight, fine, that's totally fine. We'll take email, we'll take voicemail, we take mail mail. You wanna write on that, can and hand it to us on the way out, we'll take that too. Um, really, it doesn't matter, we'll take the comments, they all, we think of them all the same and consider them all the same, so. Good, okay.
The hearing, hearing, so that we can get as many comments as possible. All right, so one of the first things that I wanna just talk relatively about before we officially open the hearing is about public comments for themselves. So sometimes people ask us, well, it's, is okay to comment about, what isn't okay to comment about, I think from the questions that we have tonight, but people have a lot to say about this potential permit action, so the first thing we want to know is that anyone is free to comment about anything, we will take comments about anything, the permit will take comments about anything. There's definitely comments that are more likely to lead to changes, those are gonna be comments that are focused on the content of the permit. Um, comments that, no specific changes, and that are general. Um, some comments that are more, are least likely to lead to changes are gonna be things like what Grace mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, things that are gonna be outside the scope of our work, which like zoning, truck traffic, and noise, so just to set the stage, again, we will, we love to hear people's comments, truly, so we will definitely take comments on anything that you would like to give us. All right, so with that being said, we're gonna get right into the hearing, I just need to read an official statement to get things started, and then we'll start calling names of people who have said they'd like to make a comment, so. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this public hearing, my name is Jennifer Dixon, I'm with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy of Eagle, and I'll be the hearing officer tonight, and that's Switzer, Air Quality Division Director, and Decision Maker for the Summer Application. She'll be listening to your comments this evening. She will be considering all comments before making a decision. This hearing is related to a request from EES Coke Battery LLC located on Zog Island in River Ridge, Michigan. The company is requesting to add a secondary coke screener and associated equipment at its facility. The Air Quality Division regulates sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse impacts on public health and the environment. The law governing these responsibilities is Part 55 of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. Before the company can install and operate any new equipment, it must obtain a permit that meets the requirements of Michigan's air quality laws. This means the equipment must be capable of meeting state and federal emission standards, including health-based standards. The proposed permit must also contain conditions that include emission limits and specific ways of operating the equipment to ensure these standards are met. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to allow anyone interested in the proposed permit to provide information we can use in deciding whether to approve the permit, or if there are additional issues to consider. The proposed permit is still a draft permit, that does not mean a decision has been made. Instead, it reflects an initial technical review of the proposal. We hope having the details of the draft permit will help you provide comments. Everything in the draft permit remains open for comment and further consideration, including whether the permit will be granted at all. As rear-review comments, we can only use the information you provide to make changes if it is within our authority, so for example, comments about local zoning, truck traffic, and noise cannot be considered as part of the decision. Some of you may want to simply express your support or opposition to the proposed project. We are happy to note your position, but please understand the department is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to the proposed project. The hearing is being recorded, and your comments will be part of the information we consider in making a decision. The public comment period began on January 8th, and will end at midnight on February 24, 2025. Additional comments or information may be submitted via written or verbal comment during this hearing by email or by voicemail. After the public comment period closes, all written and verbal comments will be reviewed. All significant air quality-related comments will be considered, at which point the decision-maker makes a final decision. The decision-maker may deny the permit, approve as drafted, or approve with amendments. If approved, the decision must specify which provisions of the draft permit, if any, have been changed in the final permit and the reasons for the change. In all three of these scenarios, all interested parties, including everyone on the original mailing list, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period, and/or attended the public hearing, will be directly notified of the decision. The mailing will include a letter from the decision-maker regarding the decision and, if applicable, the approved permit. Please recognize, our staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your views on the proposed project, and to listen to your comments. As a reminder, you do not need to comment tonight to have your comment be considered. You may submit a written comment at any time during the comment period by U.S. post or email, or you may call in a comment to the public comment voicemail. I will go over how to do that after the hearing. So those of you who have joined us online, you may submit your comment in writing tonight by typing the word COMMENT into your question box, or you may raise your hand to make a comment when we get past the cards here in the room. We are going to limit your comment time to about three minutes, if you're speaking, I'll try to let you know when you have about 30 seconds left. I'll begin calling the names of the people who have indicated they would like to make a verbal comment tonight, and once we get through that initial list, anyone else who would like to make a comment will be able to do so, even if you have not already indicated you would like to make a comment on registering for the meeting. So what I'm gonna do is call three names, and if you guys don't mind, just coming up to the microphone so that we can make sure people can get a chance to comment tonight. Uh, so Teresa Landrum, you are up first. Victor Jimenez, you are next after that, and then Dan Buckley, I think it says, Dan Buckley.
Over there.
Oh, right here, Teresa, I'm sorry, right here up to the mic. Yep, you got it, so Teresa knows how to do this, she's done it a lot, but for those of you who might not, just please make sure that you uh, say your name and any affiliation that you'd like to mention before you start your comment, so Teresa, you can go ahead whenever you are ready.
Okay, forgive me, I forgot my glasses, left them at home, I can't have seat, so. If I make mistakes, they're all written out.
That's all right.
Okay, uh, my name is Teresa Landrum, I am the President of the Original United Citizens South of Detroit. I am a lifelong resident of this community. Um, in regards to EES Coke Battery, uh, I would like to ask that Eagle deny this permit. Eagle knows, and we all know, that the air is unsafe. EES, EES Coke Battery, existing pollution levels violate the law. Every single air monitoring facility exceeds federal health-based standards for a particular matter. Eagle's current director informed the EPA that Wayne County fails air quality standards for a particular matter. EPA predicts Wayne County will be one of the only 52 counties in the country with PM 2.5 levels above the standard by 2022. From personal experience, I, uh, I in our community knows the health impacts from pollution, even though we know we both must not take into consideration racial health impacts, but we talk with passion because we know that our community is sick. Eagle and EPA said that their, um, their goal and their mission is to protect human health. But as over the years, over 30 years, we've been working around this, we have not seen health impacts brought into consideration when a company is asking for a permit. Um, my father worked at Zog Island in EES Coke Battery, he died of chlamydia, black lung, and, um, we know it's in the air. We know that any minute increase is harmful to our community. In 2024, we had a nine-year-old student of Mark Twain School, and a resident of Southwest Detroit 4217, die from an asthma attack after being exposed to, uh, what we call sensitive populations during the air quality alerts we had more than 30 last year because of the extenuating circumstances with the increase of the Canadian wildfires. And, um, we received an air quality alert every day from either on my phone or on my, uh, computer. The facility already estimated, uh, costs 19 to 57 premature deaths on an annual basis. Over 15,000 asthma cases can be linked to this facility. Our community ranks in 100, the 100th percentile for pollution 30 statewide. Their lives are being impacted as pollution affects our quality of life. We don't take breathing for granted, when our kids that have asthma go outside to play, we know it's a risk. Just wanting to be a kid could kill you if you have a sensitive, uh, if you're sensitive to pollution and have other kind of health incidents. Or just simply opening our window to get fresh air, we could harm our children.
30 seconds.
Okay, well, I'm going to take a little bit, and then I'll refrain because I gotta print it out, um. I would like to ask Eagle, um, do they even bother to take into consideration that we are surrounded by more than 42 heavily polluted industries? And that if there is any laws on the books, when for cumulative impact, when are they used? Because we know that facilities are judged individually per chemical per facility. So I'll refrain from any other remarks, and we can take them and put them on the record, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, come on. Okay, so the next two, uh, three people are going to be Victor Jimenez, Dan Buckley, and Brian, I'm not gonna try to say your last name, I apologize.
Good evening, uh, my name is Victor Jimenez. I'm with Michigan League Conservation Voters, and I urge Eagle to deny the permit requested by EES Coke. EES Coke is already one of the worst polluters in Michigan, ranking number four in PM 2.5 pollution. These polluters are people daily contributing up to 57 deaths per year in Michigan and over 15,000 cases of asthma symptoms annually. This facility operates in a community that is 75% people of color and 61% low-income, already facing some of the highest asthma and cancer rates in the state. EES Coke's pollution disproportionately impacts residents, especially children, with two out of five residents being under 18. Now, EES Coke wants to increase emissions to a particular matter by 1.6 more tons per year, including PM 2.5, the most dangerous form of this pollution. This tiny pollutant enters the lungs and bloodstream, increasing the risk of asthma, heart disease, and premature death. EES Coke is already a top-hand polluter, no more is acceptable. EES Coke is already a top-hand polluter. No more is acceptable. DTE and EES Coke must take responsibility for the harm they've caused by funding community health programs, covering medical bills, and cleaning up pollution before applying new permits. Additionally, I am calling on Eagle to require air monitors in all new and existing industrial sites, including this facility, without real-time publicly available air monitoring. Communities are left in the dark about the dangers they're exposed to daily. Eagle must ensure that corporations are held accountable for their pollution. Eagle knows that local air quality already exceeds EPA health standards. Approving this permit would worsen an already dangerous situation. As pollution is cumulative, Eagle's job is to protect public health, not rubber stamp pollution. I urge you to reject this permit and require air monitoring at this and all industrial sites. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. So I think Dan might have left, so that would be, then you would be next, Brian, if you don't mind. And then after Brian, we have Kristi. Kristi left as well. Hold on one second. Emily, I'm sorry.
Question. With those standing at the time, can we have one last thirty seconds to do a follow-up comment?
I gave you up like four and a half minutes, but if we get through everybody else, for sure. So then the next person would be Emily, Embick, I think, Embick? Let me switch it to see. And then Okay, sorry, Brian, I'll re-read it.
Good evening. My name is Brian Segalski, campaign organizer with Sierra Club, and I'm here to oppose Eagle's admittedly negligent air permitting process and the system's systemic failure to protect our overburdened community from EES Coke's ongoing violations and toxic emissions. For years, EES Coke, a DTE subsidiary, by the way, just to show the kind of negligence and willful intent of EES Coke, they are currently in a lawsuit and have hired health experts to dispute the health claims that sulfur dioxide actually has caused our community harm. So not just to give you an idea of what that company is currently claiming, they are trying to get out of the context. So for years, they've released high rates of particulate matters, those thousands of tons of sulfur dioxide regularly exceeding the permit limits. Pollution from this facility alone causes over fifteen thousand asthma attacks, up to fifty-seven deaths per year. The community surrounding EES Coke faces unique health, pollution, and socioeconomic burden. The state's own EJ screen mapping tools confirm that this community ranks in the highest percentile for human pollution and pre-existing health vulnerabilities, but here's the trick. Eagle claims that it can only consider these unique health risks when determining how they do public outreach, and often suggests it cannot consider these cumulative impacts, none of our pre-existing health conditions, in their actual permit decisions. Well, let's be clear, that is simply not true. It's not acceptable. We can't accept it, and it needs to change immediately. Rule two-two-eight gives Eagle the authority to enforce stricter emissions limit when existing standards fail to protect public health. Newsflash, the existing emission standards are failing to protect our community that faces unique health risks that are not factored in. This means Eagle is choosing not to enforce stricter limits. In Eagle's PM two-point-five attainment fact sheet, they state that people with pre-existing conditions such as diabetes, heart disease, lung disease, and asthma are at higher risk for PM two-point-five. We have the highest rates of asthma in the state, and so face unique risks. How dare we not choose, how dare Eagle not choose to take this into consideration in their actual permit approval process? Detroit asthma rates are more than double the national average. We have unique risks to the specific pollution that EES Coke emits, and they're not accounted for. How is this acceptable? How can you sit there and claim compliance when you know that your emission standards were not designed to protect extremely overburdened and uniquely overburdened communities of our own? This isn't just about EES Coke and DTE. This is about Eagle's failure to uphold its responsibility to protect public health. Eagle, by choosing to keep doing this, they are choosing to ignore existing health risks, choosing to disregard its own legal authority, and choosing to prioritize corporate polluters over the people forced to breathe this air. Enough is enough. We need bold actions from Eagle's staff. You need to be with us. You can fight the system with us, and you can be heroes. We've got to figure out a way to change this system that is designed to absorb feedback and not actually change. Eagle must utilize Rule two-two-eight to enforce stricter emissions limits in overburdened communities that face unique health risks from these pollutions. To enforce stricter limits, that means that Eagle must not only deny this permit, it must remove existing permits from EES Coke that exceed the more stringent limits that we decide that are determined after we do this cumulative impact analysis.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Eagle must incorporate cumulative impact assessments into actual permit decisions, not just for public outreach. There's that little section where you say, well, how is it, how is it used? You got to change that section. You got to, you have to actually use your authority to use it for approving and denying permits. And before being approved, pollutant, DTE and EES Coke, who are trying to avoid financial responsibility, what role can we, we need to, Eagle needs to take the front line and make sure that they are taking financial responsibility for the harm they've already caused, the deaths, the up to fifty deaths per year since two thousand and fourteen. They need to fund community health restoration, cover medical costs for asthma heart disease victims, and ensure real-time air quality monitoring. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate your comment. Emily, whenever you're ready. Just don't forget to say your full name and any affiliation for the record, please.
Do you need?
Yeah, there you go. Make sure you get right in on that, so we can make sure we tell.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
There you go. All right. So my name is Emily Embick, and I am with Urban Neighborhood Initiatives. We are a community development organization in Spring Wells. So for those of you who may not be familiar with Spring Wells, we are in the four-eight-two-oh-nine zip code. Sixty percent of our residents are under the age of twenty-one. And we are also located just two miles from the hood. So I am here today to demand that Eagle deny this permit for DTE, ESS, EES Coke Battery Facility. Every single air monitor near that facility exceeds federal health-based standards for a particular matter, as was confirmed this evening by me. So EPA's own director, or sorry, Eagle's own director told EPA in a letter just a week ago that Wayne County fails air quality standards for particular matter. What does that look like for our community? That looks like our neighbors having nineteen to fifty-seven premature deaths annually and over fifteen thousand cases of asthma. DTE has had at least forty-six environmental violations since two thousand and thirteen, and half of all of those violations have been at this facility. Did you bother to take any of that into account? And how can you judge whether equipment will violate the law without looking at who's in charge of operating it? Adding any new pollution to air that's already unsafe is unacceptable. So coming up with your technical reasons to approve permits that worsen air qualities in areas already failing standards when you have the power to do so is morally wrong and legally questionable. I demand that you deny this permit and to protect public health and serve restoring the faith of the people in their government. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. So that's the last of the cards I had of people indicating they would like to make a comment. So if anyone else in the room would like to make a comment, if you wouldn't mind making your way up to the microphone. Otherwise, we're gonna go ahead and get to Coke's online as well. Did you want to make a comment? Yeah, go ahead and just come up to the microphone here.
We do have eight hands up and one written comment in the, in the comment section.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay, so if you don't mind just stating your name and any affiliation for the record, and then get started whenever you're ready.
Yeah, I'm Joshua Dina. I'm also from Urban Neighborhood Initiative. Yeah, I just want to say that EES Coke is already throwing out pollutants such as PM. So this particular matter, sulfur dioxide and nitrogen oxide, which is all, which is it was all rated at the top ten. And fifty, up to fifty deaths a year is not an acceptable number, you know, by any measure. I hope you guys have the moral fortitude to understand that and use that when you're making this decision. These are fifteen, these are not numbers. These are fifty people dying a year in our neighborhoods, neighborhoods because of EES Coke. So I really hope you take that into account. I am confident that my community will, will, you know, gain the power and organize to change it, and I really hope you guys are part of that and not a block against that. Because, you know, we will, we will, you know, we will succeed, and we will go through any roadblocks in the way. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment.
I'm James Spindel. I am a private coordinator with Southwest Detroit Environmental Vision. I'm also a water protector and land defender as a cultural role through my tribe, Hidazza, and Assiniboine Port Peclo Cota. Instead of permitting for current industry practices already known to be climate change contributors and damaging to marginalized and oppressed communities, by denying this permit, Eagle could be taking the stand to enforce and promote better practices and standards. Eagle can establish a standard that we, as responsible citizens, scientists, engineers, refuse to accept this as our standard and allow for imaginative, proven, and innovative energy solutions moving forward. This is power that residents and citizens do not have on their own volition that we need from the powers that are voted in and the people who are granting permits to these sites that are damaging these communities. By standing up and using the laws, Eagle does have in its power, you'll be prolonging the lives and quality of health standards in those areas around EES Coke, around where EES Coke currently pollutes. The permit will almost, almost definitely be approved because we, as citizens, know how this goes. And if that is so, I strongly advise Eagle to enforce an air quality monitor site so future generations will be able to see how Eagle allows the furthering of increased health standards and asthma and cancer and pollution in that area. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. Is there anyone else in the room, Ebony? Are you making your way to the mic? Yes. Awesome. Okay.
Ebony Elmore, my fellow resident of Ruch. I am just having enough to the mic to support what everybody else said and to ask for you to deny the permit for EES Coke on the strength of the close proximity of the new location that they're requesting that that battery storage screener is placed on their land. Due to the close proximity, I feel like it'd be in the best interest of Eagle to protect and safeguard our community and our health and our lifespan by denying this permit, because due to what everybody else said and all the things that was mentioned, this is a danger for people that are living nearby that have their families there, their experience there. Zug Island, EES Coke, whatever they want to call it, has been in our lives for a long time. Folks in our community have worked there. We have families that work there, but all of them ultimately ended up with lower lifespan and dying from those high admitted health issues that were stated in your, in your facts due to those PM emissions. So I'm just here to make the statement that it be closed down and to consider the folks that are nearby and their healths.
Thank you, Ebony, for your comment. Anyone else in the room right now? Like, Teresa, I'm gonna get to the people online first. Caitlin, if you, are you going to just call names and then, okay.
Yep.
Yep, anybody online, just remember, state your name again for the record and any affiliation that you have, please.
So the first hand up is Raquel G. Raquel, I'm gonna unmute you, and you should be able to go ahead and make a comment.
Thank you. My name is Raquel Garcia, and I am the executive director for Southwest Detroit Environmental Vision. I also live in the neighborhood here in Southwest Detroit. My comment today is requesting that this permit be denied to express extreme concern for, for this permit. EES Coke has a long history of exceeding limits with many, many violations on record, is facing a federal lawsuit for increasing sulfur dioxide emissions without obtaining permits or installing pollution controls, is one of the state's largest sources of sulfur dioxide. These particles are so tiny that they can bypass humans' protective respiratory hairs and layers, you know, mucus layers, and lodge deeply into our lungs. Even though this permit, or what they're requesting, does not violate state air pollution rules or the federal national ambient air quality standards, we know in this room that the permit process is broken. The law is broken. If it, if it does not violate the law, then we know that the law is broken, even for the simple fact that we do not have a cumulative, you know, air quality standard, which allows company upon company upon company to continue to layer, you know, pollutants into, into our living spaces. So we, again, the law is broken, and we expect Eagle to use logic and compassion to do the right thing and deny this permit. Adding this PM matter and these additional tons of microfine particles will contribute to an estimated between thirty and sixty premature deaths annually and is linked to almost sixteen thousand cases of asthma symptoms, with just under three thousand workdays lost for, for family, you know, for providers, and three thousand three hundred school absences. We need to do more. We need more air monitors on and around Zug Island, whether this permit is approved or not. Eagle, all of the representatives, we are asking you to look beyond the administrative task of approving permits. Your decisions confirm or deny whether we are a sacrifice zone or not, that our lives are, are or are not collateral damage to, to industry with your decision. Please do the right thing, even if this permit meets the qualifications on paper. Your decision could set precedence on what we want for our communities and our children. So we, we ask you to look beyond the technical task of looking at the qualifications. We need you to, to protect our communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Okay, the next person up is John H. John, you should be able to unmute yourself and make a comment.
Hello, my name is John Hadad. I'm from Mighty Earth. I'm a lifelong Wayne County resident, and I urge Eagle to deny the permit requested by EES Coke to install and operate a secondary Coke screener at its facility on Zug Island. This facility is already a major source of air pollution in Wayne County, and approving this permit would worsen the burden on surrounding communities. According to data from EPA's National Emissions Inventory, EES Coke ranks among the top polluters in Michigan for PM two-point-five, sulfur dioxide, nitrogen oxides, and carbon monoxide. The surrounding community, which is seventy-five percent people of color and sixty-one percent low income, disproportionately suffers from high levels of pollution-related illnesses, including asthma, premature deaths, and missed school and workdays. EES Coke is causing approximately dozens of deaths per year in Michigan, thirty-one ER visits per year, fifteen K-plus asthma symptoms, and the proposed project would increase emissions of particulate matter by one-point-six additional tons per year, further worsening the already hazardous air quality. Eagle knows air quality already far exceeds EPA's health-based standards. Standards that EPA determined are necessary to protect public health with an adequate margin of safety. Allowing this permit to proceed would signal that ongoing pollution and public health harms are acceptable. EES Coke's biggest customer, Cleveland Cliff's Dearborn Works, still relies on coal-based blast furnaces. Michigan's steel industry must transition to a green hydrogen-powered direct reduction furnace instead of poisoning our air. Right now, EES Coke and Dearborn Works cost local communities six hundred million to one-point-six billion annually in health costs. Facing high rates of asthma, cancer, and heart disease, the communities around EES Coke face unique health risks that national ambient air quality standards don't fully account for. Eagle must assess these and other health vulnerabilities in overburdened neighborhoods and factor them into the, into the permit decisions instead of rubber stamping any permit that complies with NAAQS standards. Incremental increases in pollution can be a life or death issue for people in this community. New permits that will increase pollution in overburdened neighborhoods should be suspended until pre-existing health sensitivities and cumulative impacts are taken into account in actual permit decisions. We ask for cumulative impact assessments to be incorporated into actual permit decisions before allowing any new or expanded pollution in overburdened communities. We also ask for DTE and EES Coke to take financial responsibility for the harm they've caused by funding community health restoration, covering medical bills for cancer and asthma victims, investing in public green spaces, providing personal air filters and public air monitors, and cleaning up their pollution before they are granted new permits for more pollution.
Thirty seconds, please.
Eagle's responsibility is to protect Michigan's residents from harmful pollution, not to grant permits that exasperate environmental injustices. I strongly urge you to reject this permit. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Okay, the next person up is Erin S. Erin, you should be able to go ahead and make your comment.
Hello, can I be heard?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Hi, my name's Erin Stanley. I'm a resident of Southwest Detroit and I also serve as the Director of Climate Equity at Eastside Community Network. I'm here as both a concerned resident and dedicated advocate for clean air to demand that Eagle denies permit for DTE's EES Coke battery facility in River Rouge. I can't even believe we're here right now considering even more emissions in the community already struggling with the long-term health impacts of air pollution and in likely non-attainment with the new EPA particulate matter standards. I attended Eagle's Emergency Preparedness Conference over the last two days and a senior member of your staff said, quote, "Our number one goal will always be to protect public health and the environment," unquote. I'm so sick and tired of being lied to. I wish you all would just acknowledge that your job is to use federal rules to benefit corporate polluters and stop hiding behind claims of protecting health when we in the community are the ones actually showing up for the well-being of our neighbors and neighborhoods. I have to call the P's number regularly to report odors both where I live and where I work and they can never figure out the actual source because there are too many around to town. We are in the one hundredth percentile of pollution burden statewide, all while Eagle is denying their ability to consider cumulative impacts in public health in their regulatory decisions. Nationally, EPA predicts Wayne County will be one of only fifteen counties in the country with PM two point five levels above the standards even by 2032. And we are the number three asthma capital in the nation according to the American Lung Association. This is not only embarrassing, it's unlivable. We will continue to do our work, which is fight for legislative change, but Eagle needs to use its authority under Rule Two Twenty Eight to include these cumulative impacts in actual permit decisions before letting repeat offenders like EES Coke increase their emissions in at-risk communities. If you approve this permit, then please require EES Coke to install air monitors, to perform health impact assessments, and to pay for community identified mitigation measures. Adding any new pollution to air that's already unsafe, even if there are technical loopholes that allow you to do so, is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin, for your comment.
Okay, the next, actually, two people up there, both using the login, Liz J. So I'm gonna unmute one and then we'll go with the other one. So hopefully you can see that on your end. So, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. My name is Mitch Bashelder, not Liz Jacob, but I am a Southwest Detroit resident and I am a relatively new resident of Detroit and I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what I'm hearing correctly. So, EES Coke, a subsidiary of DTE and River Rouge, has failed to install legally required pollution controls, releasing thousands of tons of sulfur dioxide in Detroit's four-eight-two-one-seven zip code, which is already one of the most heavily polluted areas in Michigan. So in short, they're heavily contributing to killing people, but instead of DTE and EES Coke fixing this and taking responsibility for all the illegal emissions, they're now instead seeking a new air permit that could allow even more pollution in communities already suffering from poor air quality. So there's no admission of fault, there's no remedies for the communities that have already been screwed over, and to top it all off, they have the audacity to try to make it worse. This permit should absolutely not be granted and DTE and EES Coke need to take financial responsibility for all of the harm they've caused. And instead, they should be funding community health restoration, covering medical bills for cancer and asthma victims, and just in general, cleaning up their pollution that's killing our communities. Shame on DTE, shame on EES Coke, and shame on you all if you grant them this permit and allow them to keep killing our communities. This is on you if you allow it to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, so the other, Liz J., you should be able to go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone. I'm actually Liz Jacob. I'm an environmental justice attorney at the Sugar Law Center for Economic and Social Justice and I'm also a resident of Southwest Detroit. I'm here today to implore Eagle to deny the permit requested by EES Coke. I moved to Detroit in 2023. I'm a new resident and only eight months after I moved to Detroit, I was diagnosed with asthma, which my doctors attributed to the high level of pollution in Wayne County. Wayne County has such an extraordinary burden of pollution that it only took me eight months of living here to contract asthma. Living with asthma has seriously impacted my health, my well-being, and my ability to thrive. My story is not unique. As an attorney, I've worked with community members throughout Metro Detroit who are experiencing the same asthma-related issues, who are living with cancer, respiratory illnesses, and other pollution-caused health impacts that undermine their lives every single day. From my clients and the community leaders I serve alongside, I know that this is not a new fight. Residents of River Rouge, Detroit, and Ecorse have spoken out for years about the inequitable levels of pollution that plagues their communities. Kids are chronically absent from school due to asthma. Cancer rates are spiking in our neighborhoods and hundreds of residents are experiencing devastating long-term health impacts because of DTE and EES Coke's relentless desire for profit at the expense of our lives. And despite years of speaking out, Eagle has continued to rubber stamp their permits and put the needs of corporate polluters over the needs of the people. Michigan EJ Screen, the state of Michigan's own environmental justice screening tool, shows that the communities near EES Coke's facility are in the ninety-fifth and hundredth percentiles for pollution exposure and underlying health risk in the state. Let me just make it clear, the residents living near this facility are already living in some of the most polluted communities in the entire state of Michigan. So it should come as no surprise that Wayne County is out of compliance with the national air quality standards. Eagle should be treating this noncompliance as what it is, a crisis that is devastating the health and well-being of our communities. Eagle should be doing everything in its power to limit and stop pollution in Wayne County. That means going above and beyond the bare minimum to put in place policies that actually curb tail rampant pollution and care for community members. Eagle should not be moving forward a single project that would have any impact on air quality. I've heard several times today that this EES Coke permit is a relatively minor project. However, I implore Eagle to recognize that there are no minor projects in communities already so burdened by pollution. The size of the addition simply doesn't matter. It all contributes to additional overburdening in an already overburdened community. Any additional PM two point five emission in the area is already exceeding standards that are frankly unacceptable under the Clean Air Act. For far too long, the law has been manipulated by polluters like EES Coke to prioritize profits over our health. But today, Eagle can stand with communities and change that story. To protect our communities, Eagle must assess the cumulative impacts of pollution. Eagle must reject these kinds of permits that continue to burden our communities. I implore Eagle, deny the EES Coke permit, put our lives first. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, the next commenter is Deb S. Deb, you should be able to unmute yourself and make your comment.
Hi, I'm Deb Sumner. I'm a long-life resident in Southwest Detroit. I'm sixty-eight now, okay? I've got leukemia. It's the chronic kind. It's a little slower. My neighbor directly across the street from me had, was diagnosed with leukemia as well and he died though because he had the more aggressive acute kind. Then I have another neighbor a block away on Clark Street and she told me a couple years ago she was diagnosed with leukemia. We don't live but, you know, yards away, I don't know the exact footage, but, you know, from the corridor of I-75. We're right in, you know, we, I grew up here, so I, I have all kinds of, you know, health issues from the CLL. But, you know, I'm here because I, I really am begging you. I, I know you guys have your pat answers and, you know, you respond to the people very kindly and yet we're, we really are demanding that Eagle really deny, okay, really deny this, this, it's DTE subsidiary, okay, this EES battery LLC. And, you know, this is a bad actor. DET, EES, they're horrible actors and they have, I don't know, like, something like, I don't know, like fifty violations since 2013. And half of them, almost half of them, were at this specific facility. So you've got to look at the operator in a decision-making, you know, application. You've got to look at the fact that we're already in non-attainment and that, that's with PM and other key toxic, you know, chemicals in the air. And we do, help us, help us breathe cleaner air and we know you can do it because you guys sat down with seven major polluting sources from the air that are in our Southwest Detroit area and six of them, you got them to reduce what they were spewing off. So one of them sued you. Oh, well, US Steel, everybody. So I think that we know you can do this. You can sit down with every polluter, every industry that's here and been making our, breathing our, our air such poor quality and non-attainment. Let's get to attainment. Let's get them to all be required to put reduction plans together and reduce their pollutants. You guys could do it with six. You know you can do it with most of all of the ones that, you know, you might consider not as major.
Thanks, Deb.
Okay, everything affect us. We're breathing it every day and us elderly folk, you know, are paying for it. Don't let the kids growing up here pay for it too. Let's get this under control. So please deny this particular permit. You could probably put them on moratorium till all industry reduces the pollutants that they are spewing off. I commend you because I think you can do it. You told us you did it three weeks ago. You, I mean, you didn't do it three weeks ago, but you told us that you sat with those, those seven big, big major sources. Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you for your comment.
Okay, the next commenter is Maricela G. You should be able to go ahead and unmute yourself and make your comment.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Maricela Gutierrez and I'm from Industrious Labs and I urge Eagle to deny the permit request by EES Coke. EES Coke is already one of the worst polluters in Michigan. They are top four in PM two point five pollution, which is the most dangerous form of particulate matter because it is so small. It enters the lungs and bloodstream, increasing the risk of asthma, heart disease, and premature death. They're also top polluters in sulfur dioxide, nitrogen oxide, and carbon monoxide. Their pollution is harming Michiganders every day, contributing to approximately twenty-nine to fifty-seven deaths per year in Michigan, over fifteen thousand cases of asthma symptoms per year, and costing local residents in health costs. EES Coke's biggest customer is Cleveland Cliff's Dearborn Works, which burns EES Cokes in, in coal-based blast furnaces to make steel. Together, these two polluters cost an estimated point six to one point two billion in annual health costs to the community. That is a massive burden on local residents who have to pay this out of their own pockets. Meanwhile, these big businesses continue to profit and push for even more pollution as they're doing today. Michigan's steel industry must adapt cleaner technology which is available instead of bringing harm and pollution. EES Coke wants to increase emissions of particulate matter. No more pollution is acceptable. The community around this facility is primarily people of color and low income. This area has more children with two out of five residents under eighteen compared to one in five statewide. They already face some of the highest asthma and cancer rates in the state, meaning that EES's Coke pollution disproportionately impacts overburdened residents who are especially vulnerable to pollution exposure. Eagle must incorporate cumulative impact assessments and pre-existing health vulnerabilities into actual permit decisions before allowing any new or expanding pollution in overburdened communities. EES Coke must take responsibility for the harms they've caused by funding community health programs covering medical bills, including investing in green spaces and also installing air filters and monitors and cleaning up pollution before they get any new, new permits. Eagle knows local air quality already exceeds EPA's health standards. Approving this permit would worsen an already dire situation because pollution is cumulative. Allowing more pollution is adding water to an already overfilled and spilling cup. Eagle, please protect public health and reject this permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Okay, the next, last hand that I have up right now is Carly O. Carly, you should be able to go out and make your comment.
Sorry, I was on mute. Hi, everyone. My name is Carly Obath and I'm the Senior Supply Chain Campaigner with Public Citizen. And by way of background, Public Citizen is a nonprofit consumer advocacy organization that champions the public interest. As part of our broader climate program, we are campaigning for the steel industry to adopt cleaner technology that doesn't rely on harmful and polluting fossil fuels. I'm speaking tonight to urge the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy to deny, deny the permit requested by EES Coke. EES Coke is already one of the worst polluters in Michigan, ranking number five for sulfur dioxide pollution according to analysis of EPA data. Even short-term exposure to sulfur dioxide can harm respiratory health, especially for people with asthma, and can cause heart attacks and premature death. Beyond sulfur dioxide, EES Coke also emits dangerous levels of nitrogen oxide and carbon monoxide. These pollutants are harming people every day, contributing to dozens of ER visits per year and as many as fifty-seven deaths in Michigan annually. Furthermore, according to EPA data, the community around this facility is seventy-five percent people of color and sixty-one percent low income and already faces some of the highest asthma and cancer rates in the state, meaning EES Coke pollution disproportionately impacts overburdened residents, especially vulnerable to pollution exposure, including children. Last year, I joined local government officials and members of the media on a toxic bus tour of Southwest Detroit and I saw many of the industrial facilities that spew hazardous air pollution throughout these communities. On the tour, I heard from residents and environmental justice activists that this area has the highest number of asthma-related hospitalizations in the nation. Cancer rates in Southwest Detroit, including rare forms of cancer like scalp and nasal cancer, are significantly higher than the national average. These are just a few of the devastating health impacts linked to toxic air pollution. I understand that EES Coke's permit, if granted, would increase emissions of particulate matter by one point six more tons per year, including PM two point five, which is the most dangerous form of particulate pollution. It is so small that it enters the lungs and the bloodstream, increasing the risk of asthma, heart disease, and premature death. EES Coke is already a top PM polluter and increasing this type of pollution is unacceptable. I want to add that there's an amazing mural a few blocks from the Kemani Recreation Center that says, "People Over Profit." It's such a simple but powerful message and I urge you to make this central to your decision making on this permit application because pollution is cumulative and approving this permit would worsen an already dangerous situation. In line with your mission of protecting public health, I urge you to reject this permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Carly, for your comment. Did you have one that was in?
I have one that is written. Do you want me to just read it as it's written?
Yes, please.
Okay. So this comment comes from Mr. Paul Boyce, two-two-one-four-four, Edison Street, Dearborn, Michigan, four-eight-one-two-four. His comment reads as written, "The proposed permit appears only to address additional pollutants generated by the additional equipment, not total amount from coking process. Please consider total impact to surrounding community. Coke has carcinogenic toxins. A toxic screening of fugitive dust should be performed and not optional. Modifications of facilities that increase pollution in non-attainment areas should trigger analysis of better alternatives, e.g., use, use of hydrogen or even methane in iron slash steel production process. Winds will carry dust. Consider nearby communities beyond Detroit and River Rouge, i.e...." i.e. Southeast Dearborn and Southwest Ontario. There is an Arab-American community nearby. Southeast Dearborn is approximately one mile from Zog Island, and Salina Elementary and Middle School students, students are mostly Arab-American, and Dearborn are approximately two miles from Zog Island. Please distribute material regarding this permit application in Arabic. Dearborn installed air quality monitors in Southeast Dearborn one year ago. Please review data from these monitors." End of comment.
Thank you Caitlin. Thank you Mr. Boyce for your comment.
Oh, nope, further comment. I missed it. It was below and, thank you. So he also added, "Michigan is leading efforts nationally to produce hydrogen and has greatest geologic hydrogen reserves nationally. Incentivize regional iron/steel industry to convert production process away from coal/COG. Polluting facilities on Zog Island should be decommissioned." That's the end.
Okay, thank you. Teresa, if you would like to add an additional comment? If you can get out of the chair. Also, anyone else online who didn't already make a comment? If you would like to raise your hand, we do still have a little bit of time for some more comments, but Teresa, just state your name again if you don't mind.
Teresa Landrum, Southwest Detroit, 4217, President of Regional United Citizens, Southwest Detroit. I wanted to make an additional comment. In the commit reading, I did not see a requirement for the facility to place air monitors around their facility. I would like to ask Eagle, is there a way that there can be a rescinding or an amendment for the facility to add air quality monitors on their property? And then be able to put them on the website? And then we can see real-time and data around what emissions of particulate matter, the increase or decrease, and we can, as citizens, can tie in for those that can go to the website. So I really think it's important, we talk about other monitors, but what about the facility monitoring itself? And we can see it in real-time data. So I think that's one of the things that if the company in good faith and Eagle in good faith want to tell us what the actual PM matter is at the time, or the modeling that will show how many years down the line over a period of time, I think that would be an additive that would help us, as Ebony asked, what would assure us? Right? And then with, we know, us knowing that 1.6 more tons per year, and that's a gentleman just stated from his last comment, what is the overall? Thank you.
Thank you Teresa for the rest of your comment. Anyone else online? Caitlin?
Yep, one more hand came up. Audrey U. Audrey, I'm going to unmute you, and you should be able to go ahead and make your comment.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah, hello. My name is Audrey Urcheck. I'm here as a concerned citizen. I'm a citizen in Hamtramck, Michigan, so just nearby. And after watching all of tonight's presentation, I did feel compelled to speak. I wasn't sure if I was going to, but I do feel that I want to. And I would like to urge you to deny this permit. Throughout the evening, I've really been taken aback that there is a lack of consideration of cumulative pollution and cumulative health impact. I don't see a way this can proceed responsibly without that. And that's been said countless times throughout the evening. And I do want to echo that. I think without cumulative impact in an overburdened community, this cannot proceed responsibly, and this permit cannot be approved. This must be denied. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Anyone else online, Caitlin? Would anyone else in the room like to make a comment before we close the hearing? Brian, you can have.
I just wanted to say, just to comment in addition.
But don't, sorry, yeah, make sure you do your name again and everything.
My name's, yeah, Brian Spagelski, Campaign Organization of Sierra Club. I just wanted to add on to what Teresa Landrum mentioned about putting those continuous air monitors there to kind of show good faith. This could also be an example of how Eagle finds a way to take into account past violations of what, you know, all evidence points to is a bad actor, right? They are significantly worse in comparison to peer Coke facilities. And they are fighting accountability actively in court to avoid their paying for remediating health damages, environmental damages from the illegal pollution that they've caused for 10 years. So this might be an opportunity to do what, you know, we've been asking activists and community members have been asking for for decades, which is use, you know, incorporate in some way, you know, test out, find some way to incorporate past violations into your process in some way. This, you know, that could be a way to enforce the building of additional air monitors, continuous air monitors at that facility linked to this, linked to this permit.
Thank you very much for your comment.
One more handed come up.
Okay.
The next person with their hand up is Simone S. Simone, I'm gonna unmute you, and you should be able to go ahead and make your comment.
Hi, good evening. Apologies for joining this hearing late. Appreciate the comments. I just wanted to weigh in on the status of non-attainment that we are in already for ozone and now for PM that a big concern that I have, and I know others do, is that until we have a process that is efficient and delivers on getting us into attainment quickly for these scenarios, essentially, my understanding is non-attainment is an illegal level of air pollution that we're breathing that is at an unhealthy level. So it's a legal standard, we know, for each different pollutant, and for any one of them, if we are in non-attainment, it's a pass that's being given while the burden, the health, the dramatic, you know, severe health impacts that people experience, thousands of people from this situation just get to go on. So all the monitoring that we do, all the, you know, pleading to do good monitoring and to issue better permits, all of it doesn't even mean anything if once we exceed a pollutant's legal standard. And this goes on for a decade sometimes before we're in attainment. We know that we were just brought into attainment for SO2, but for any one of these pollutants, being in non-attainment is a terrible thing for residents in the communities that it affects. And so I feel like we shouldn't be issuing permits. We need like a call to action to figure out proactively how we're going to keep companies below that level, how we're going to keep our community below that level before we ever reach it. We know sometimes in advance that we're approaching that level, and measures should be taken sooner. There should be a public discussion and organization around making sure we get into attainment as soon as possible, not going on year after year after year, because all of this doesn't even matter if we're not going to actually do something about violating those legal limits. Thank you.
Thank you Simone for your comment. Any other commenters online, Caitlin?
No other hands up at this time.
Anyone else in the room who hasn't already made a comment that would like to? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close the hearing out, and then we just have a couple other things. Thank you all for sticking around. So thank you for taking the time to participate in this meeting tonight. We appreciate your interest in protecting Michigan's air quality. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period will close at midnight on February 24, 2025. All interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period, and anyone who attended this public hearing will be notified of the final decision on the proposed permit. The hearing is now closed, so thank you again. So just a couple other things. We talked about not having to make a comment tonight. I just wanted to let folks know this is how you can still make a comment before the end of the comment period. As mentioned previously, we will definitely take things through the US mail. You can email your comments in, and you can actually call the voicemail and read your comment to the voicemail as well. That number is 517-284-0900. All of the information that we talked about tonight is available on our public comment page, so that's michigan.gov/eagleairpublicnotice. Folks are interested in that. What can you find there? This is probably more important for folks online because we do have a lot of this information out at the table. If you didn't grab it on the way in, feel free to grab it on the way out. Take copies for your friends. So that's going to be the proposed project summary, which is that kind of high-level overview of the proposal. The technical fact sheet digs a lot more in detail about the rules and regulations we talked about tonight. You can look at what the proposed permit looks like, and then we will post a link to this meeting as soon as the recording is finished. That being said, here's how you can get ahold of the panelists. If you'd like to, I'll pause a moment. If anyone wants to take a picture of that slide, we'll also share a copy of this slide out. So if you provide your email address at all, we can send these right to you so you have them at your fingertips. But even if you just kind of remember one person, if you remember Grace, she'll get your questions to other folks if she can't answer them herself. So definitely don't worry about memorizing everyone's information. You also heard some folks talk about the P's line. That's our pollution emergency number. So if there is ever an pollution emergency that you want to report, or if you're having issues with odors, things like that, we definitely encourage you to call into that number at 800-292-4706. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the meeting out. Caitlin, you go ahead and close things online. Thank you very much, everybody, for joining us. We really greatly appreciate all the time, effort, and questions that everyone has tonight. So thank you so much.